Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting for the Board of Selection of OCAM. Monday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty four. We'll declare the meeting open at six P M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you all. Next item to approve the warrants WR two five dash oh six. What would the board like to do?
I'll make a motion to approve warrants WR twenty five dash zero six.
All in favor?
Aye.
April first. Okay.
That's the only one.
Next item. Minutes for April first, twenty twenty four.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written for April first, twenty twenty four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public session, do we have anybody present for a public session this evening? Mrs. Ratchinsky?
Not so long, you're doing, we have, we now on Friday. And we have new officers, we have Claire Hendra as treasurer and Rick Hendra as secretary. We have no chair and we have no vice chair. So the decision of our committee was to move forward with perhaps hiring what we would like to see as a director of the senior center, not an activities coordinator. And in that regard, Claire and I worked today and we have rewarded the job description that was given to the activities coordinator that we think is more to what we see happening in the senior center. And in that regard also, we look to be investigating the senior centers around us in the other communities like Rutland, North Brookfield, perhaps Lester, um, the Braintree.
Spencer.
Spencer. And we drafted a list of possible questions to pursue with those sites in order to understand better whether we'd be a good fit with them or not. Um, so those things I have for you. And we've also received the MOU from Elder Services of Worcester, and since we have no director and we have no chair, we don't feel comfortable signing it. They have been asking for our signature for a bit and we wanted to review it beforehand. One of the items in it says that we coordinate program activities both before and after mealtime to encourage participation in the dining. And we don't have the staff to cover those kinds of activities. So I brought them for your proposal.
May I add something? So we had the open house last Friday. And I just wanted to let you know, I know I told Lucy that the Barry Gazette forgot to run her ad. So if you were looking for the ad, that's why you didn't see it, okay? So we appreciate the Facebook we had, Melanie posted on the Facebook for us, we appreciated the electronic sign because it really made a big difference.
Pardon?
There about. You know.
She's been doing this all.
Just wasn't sure she held something with.
So anyhow, we got maybe ten new people that showed up to the senior center on Friday.
We had a total of twenty six attendants.
Ten new and the others were repeaters. So with the attendance that we had and with meeting that we had, unable to get anybody to act as chair or vice chair. We talked among ourselves and what we were thinking of is going ahead with a director's position part time. And we're looking at that to be a bridge to what we might possibly do in the future and what we're looking for in the future is to see if we can merge with another senior center. So that's, that's the background. That's the background of the questions that you thought, because what we want to do is have uniform questions, so we can do a fair comparison of the towns and we thought we would go to the surrounding towns. So we have some questions there, one, some of the stuff is that areas that we would like to see. And one of the things that was important to us is that senior centers can have multiple sites, satellite sites for a senior center. They usually have as a larger district. So that's what we would be asking another town, if we met merged with them, could we have a satellite site here for the activities that we're afraid that senior citizens from OCAM would not travel to another town? So that would be things like podiatry, the congregate meals, meals on wheels, those types of things.
Blood pressure.
And blood pressure.
Right.
Okay, so we're just beginning that. And so we wanted you to be aware in case you got a call from somebody from one of the, from one of the under towns that you were aware of what we were doing. And we'll keep you posted.
Please, yes.
Yeah. We know that when it comes time uh, to move forward, if we say yes, we would, we recommend that we move forward. At that point, then it would be up to you to negotiate the contract with them. And uh,
Other senior centers.
Yeah, the other senior centers and I just wanted to point out that we have a formula grant. And that would be an area negotiation because that revenue that would go to that town, Pacific County, where I'm visiting. The problem that we have, the big problem that we have is not that we don't have enough people coming to the senior center, which is just one part of the problem. The big problem for us is staffing. We don't have enough people to keep it open. If you go to the other senior centers or if you talk to elder affairs or the mass council on aging, they tell you that you need to have people who are the sponsors for an activity, that they are willing to be there for that activity. We don't have sponsors. The ones that we have are not necessarily able to be there all of the time. And that's where we're having major difficulties. So what would happen is somebody would say, I will do X, but when they can't do it, then Barbara ends up doing it. So what's happening is Barbara has become the sponsor for all events. And uh, and that's why she turned down being chair. I also want you just to be aware that I will be sending an email to Melanie and trying to unload um, Barbara and any of the others who cannot step up and be a consistent sponsor of an activity. We discussed, and you heard this Lucy, that I will approach Melanie and I'll say instead of us collecting what we're charging for an activity, she collects it and she bills us the difference for what she's charging us and what she has collected.
Right.
Yeah, and I'll be sending out an email on that to her, so we have it in writing.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Good. I think that was the best way to go with that.
I think so too. And so that would affect Zumba and it would affect functional fitness.
Right.
Yeah, those two.
Okay, good.
If you have questions you want to add onto that sheet as we do poking around, would you please tell us, okay, so we can add to it?
Is there any word back from the school again or not?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
I did hear that the, some of the afternoons after three o'clock, three thirty, that they do have a program for champions there, so I don't know how many days they have it, so I'm going to double check on that.
And on our end, we're double checking with the lady that offers yoga.
Because she may not be willing to do the late afternoon.
Would be doing it late afternoon.
Yeah, Champions is their after school program that is through Quabin. Um, like a third vendor party, but that's Monday through Friday.
Is that um, after school?
Uh huh. Till six P M.
Okay.
And we, we need to check with Lisa because she offers it at one o'clock. Late afternoon, she has kids coming home from school and stuff.
So we have to check as well.
To do it late afternoon, so.
So if you check and we check, then, you know.
He's absolutely nothing to us, but my reformation. Out of Waitley is eighteen hundred forty populations, who look to us. Their COA has a director, program assistant and outreach coordinator.
Which one is this?
Waitley.
Waitley. Where is Waitley?
Out in the west.
Okay.
Budget's a little more than ours, it's five point.
Just a little, I'm sure.
Five point seven now.
Nine. But still.
It's close to New York City, isn't it?
Waitley.
No. It's in the Berkshires.
It's in Berkshires, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Some of those centers have reach of like
Regional.
Regionalized, because we met one of the directors from Chesterfield, Ocean. I can't remember the other towns, yeah.
She covered three towns.
She covered three towns, yeah.
This one covers one.
Just one? How many members in the town?
Well, he's just telling Lucy the total budget is five point seven million.
Oh.
Same size as this town.
Okay.
Ours is four nine.
Yeah. I wonder what their council on aging budget is. And they have all those, do they pay?
Eight thousand. Council on Aging budget is thirty eight thousand.
Thirty eight, thirty eight thousand, ours is around twenty.
Yeah.
Into.
Yeah.
I think it was closer to twenty six this year, I think.
I wish it was. If you're offering, you take it. But if you, you know, Lucy, if you add on the formula grant, then it brings you up to around twenty six, twenty seven. If you add that on. Uh, the other thing was Rutland, when Barbara was talking with Rutland, they were very excited about us having a quote unquote activities director because they didn't have one. So we were a little concerned about if we do this bridge and we have a person, you know, now we, what do we do with the person? But if Rutland would be willing to take them on as a quote unquote activities director, that make it, might make it a smoother transition.
Rutland has their uh, program director and an outreach coordinator. They do not have an activities coordinator.
Right.
Which means if we had the activities coordinator, it might be a nice fit for them as well.
Yeah, smooth transition, so these are just things we're keeping in our heads, you know, as we poke around and ask.
Okay.
Yeah.
It gives us some steps to move forward with. Any questions?
Listen.
Okay. You're gonna need some time to run through these. Hey, sounds good, sounds good. Any other questions for us? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Maybe just one. Oh, just, but if the school doesn't work out, this room, because of the stackable chairs, might be more advantageous to us for yoga.
Oh, I would certainly think so.
Than having to move all the furniture.
Right.
Stairs in that room. Just a thought. So if we had permission to use this.
If we stack it up and then unstack. They'd be using it during the day, this isn't really used during the day.
Yeah.
Why not?
Be great, yeah.
That should be fine.
For, for Zumba Gold anymore or for functional fitness, that would not fit. But being able to stack these, as I know they can be stacked, we could have floor space because we're now up to ten or eleven people. For yoga.
Good.
Nice.
Okay. I mean, just like you did with Zumba, just move the chairs, the desk or whatever that you need.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, no problem with that. Okay, moving on, Board of Health clerk appointment, Sue Folet. Possible vote.
This appointment hadn't been put on the original because it was initially just until June thirtieth of this year.
But initially, we weren't sure at the beginning that that position was going to still be in effect after June thirtieth. We were trying to change that position to have one person do multiple jobs at the town hall. So she accepted the part-time position until June to see what we were going to do with the rest of the opposition, whether we were going to advertise it again or keep it the same. We didn't make any decisions at the time. We kind of looked over it when we were doing our appointments in June.
I think also we need money to make that general position.
Yes.
And where we already cut the budget going into twenty five.
Yes.
We didn't have it.
Right.
So but this position is funded, this one is funded, so.
So we'll keep it as, as is.
We'll keep it as is for now, particularly with his one minus on that board.
Yes, that's true.
You know.
Your input? Your ideas?
Concur, same thing. Keep it till next budget season and move forward from there. Like you say, it is funded.
It is.
And they're down by one. Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I would be open to a motion.
Yep. I move that we appoint Sue Collect as the clerk for the Board of Health. Term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. One day liquor license, Parks and Rec and Oktoberfest in the Agronomy Vineyard.
Oktoberfest is going to be put together again by Parks and Rec on Saturday, October fifth. Uh, the event will run from twelve A P M, excuse me, twelve P M till nine or ten P M, but the liquor license requested is from two to eight only. Um, again with Agronomy, which will be serving wine and malt. Um, we'll have a taped off area tent for the designated area for consumption of alcohol. And um, yeah.
Any questions?
No, I'll make a motion if you're ready.
Any questions, Don?
No.
No, we're all set. I'll entertain a motion.
Um, I move that we approve one day liquor license for Parks and Recreation for the Oktoberfest on October fifth in Agronomy, yeah, Agronomy Vineyard. And two to eight.
Two to eight.
For the pouring part of it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Can I take it? Sixty.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Next item, standard contract with services, town of OCAM with vendors. Possible vote.
Found this very they put this together for the town of Manchester.
Okay.
What do we want? Ten thousand and over? Twenty thousand and over? Or all, or every vendor? That could get cumbersome.
Yeah, it could. How many vendors do we actually count on?
Highway, police, the fire. Big numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go with the high numbers then.
So what do we do? Is this going to be required for low bids?
Any?
Or is that a separate category?
That's separate from the bids. This is once the bid's awarded, the vendor is going to have to sign off on this contract.
So if we're doing paving, they would sign off.
Sign off on this, yep.
It's just that, so we have the same contract from the town for every vendor that comes. Not one for this one, not for another one.
Yeah, with standard contract.
Starting out with, from what price on?
Ten thousand.
I would say ten thousand would be, would be fine.
So, so like, we just said the water here at the school, that whatever required this.
So anything that has the uh, recollected higher, which is starts at ten thousand.
Right.
That's fine.
Yeah, and then I would move on to like sealed bids and, yeah.
Seal, sealed bids, I think are fifty, right?
Right, but I'm just saying that that's the minimum at time.
Then once you've awarded that, then this gets filled out and done. So we know the scope of work, the hell to the scope of work, the hell to their price.
And I believe we'll need something like that for any pending allocated funds from ARPA.
Yes.
Because everything has to be in a contract by December thirty first, if it hasn't been expended.
Right.
Um, so it would be nice for it to be something coming from the town versus just relying on the vendors.
We have a vendor that has given us a contract, but it's his contract, and we're still counting on that to use that for ARPA.
That would be, it's posed on to this.
And we'll do this. And if we don't do that, and we don't get to do that, we still have his contract that we could still force him to enforce.
You could if somebody signed it. Did we sign it?
I think I might have.
Oh, you did?
I think so.
Okay. As long as somebody signed.
For the painting at the town hall.
Oh, all right, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. That's pretty simple, painting the town.
Yeah.
Well, there was the other part of that too. You know, replacing um,
damaged wood.
Damaged wood.
Yeah, he's got all this and everything that he was going to do or is going to do.
Like I said, the D O R recommends highly that we control the contracts.
Yeah. The only thing, like you said, it's kind of, it's really generic. So say with the highway, where it may be more detailed and specific as to how are we going to incorporate that into this?
Number two says the work, the work consists of, and that's where all the highway stuff would be.
That may be an addendum.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, yes.
A line of.
So you can say.
That's the way they do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like exhibit A and then attach it off.
Oh, yeah, okay, so, yeah, as long as we're on the same page.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
No, that'll be over ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Okay. I'm open for motion?
Um, before we do that, so Dawn, if we're into, and it really kind of goes back to um, the bigger jobs, this would incorporate any bonds that somebody would have to performance bonds, or do we want to incorporate that if they fail, they surrender their bonds or?
That would also be on the number two.
Okay.
Whatever we have to put in comes on the number two.
Other scopes are the
Scope.
Different um.
Requirements, any licensing.
But is that, would that cause a conundrum with the, say, the highway bids, the material bids as far?
Is it used to using these?
Okay.
Yeah, they come pretty pretty regular and complete.
I mean, look at the documents they turn into us.
Yes. And we have to read them on, it's all there.
So.
So would be, they wouldn't be able to sign these unless their bids were accepted.
Right.
So we couldn't do it on the same day that we listened to their bids. Well, it's just, I was kind of cut down on time if we.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, yeah.
But we, we can't award it the same night that we're listening, so.
No.
Yeah, but that can be fairly quick, you can send it via email, scan it.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
I mean, not going to get dropped in the mail, it can
Right, right, right.
Buy us a little time by doing electronically.
Right.
Right.
Well, I guess we got all winter to come up with a detailed for item two, you know, for roadwork. The cross the Ps and dot the Is going, going forward. But that's going to have to be all encompassing. But, you know, because if we omit something and leave something out.
What I was going to suggest is once we do that, then the draft, the council have them.
Okay, that's a good idea.
For everyone.
Well, not just for the standard format.
But for everybody that we give a standard format to, every company.
The council, that'll because we get there.
Okay.
I'm talking about the general format, like you're talking about.
Yeah. I, I really only see it, you know, unless we you know, we enter into our contract for another piece of fire equipment or you know, multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars to make sure that we get what we ordered, da, da, da.
Yeah.
The roadwork is really the, I think it's going to be the sticky one, because we have to cover everything that could contingency wise. You know, on a project.
Right.
We got to know what we're looking to do, how we want to do it. Because if we, if we omit it, they're not going to do it.
Not going to do it.
Right.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Motion?
Well, you know, make a motion, we adopt the standard agreement for contractors working with the town of OCAM and making necessary adjustments and have town council review before implementation. And the contract will be used for all contracts over ten thousand dollars.
Miss second, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opera Fund amendments, previous highway superintendent payroll, the VEDAR software and Zoom. So previous highway superintendent payroll.
So that was the difference just with going, because he went into the new fiscal year just slightly. So that was the difference of covering you know, the difference in fiscal twenty five.
July first to
Right.
The expiration. End of contract.
Right, and his end of contract was July fourth, so it's a two hundred and fifty two dollars and sixty cents. So the original amount, second, um, was eleven thousand fifty five dollars, so it would need to be amended if you're going to do it from ARPA to eleven thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and sixty cents.
So has the two fifty two sixty been paid?
It has.
So this would go into
I can.
Would it go into the, to the highway salary account?
No, it's just an accounting adjustment.
Right.
It can, I mean.
But we took the two fifty two out of that to cover it.
Yes, so she just has to put the Yes, so she just has to put the journal amount, wherever you guys, either ARPA or.
To the ARPA, just record it differently.
Yeah. No, I guess my point was, do we want to put it back into the salary account?
Take the two fifty-two sixty out of the salary.
Came from, the line item account for the highway.
I see, I see.
Instead of.
And then put it back, are we going to need that two fifty-two last week of June, next year, type of thing?
Yeah.
So, keep the ARPA as the original amount, and then do the two fifty-two sixty from the salary wages? Is that what I'm understanding, or no?
Well, we've already paid it.
Already paid it.
Okay.
Out of the salary account.
So Opera is gonna reimburse.
The salary account, correct?
She hasn't taken it out, it's sitting there almost like negative. It's where, really, where do you want the money to come out of? It's just a journal correction. She hasn't deducted that from our grand total, that two fifty-two.
But she has it in the original ARPA.
Yeah.
It's just that it's split the new year.
Right.
June thirty to July.
But that two fifty-two has it, isn't reflecting our balance. She, i- it's listed as, what do you want? Do you want me to remove it off the ARPA? Or do you want me to take it from somewhere else? But it's not, do you follow?
Not really.
No, so she, so our totals is whatever it is, twenty-five thousand five hundred, that's not deducted the two fifty-two. So she could take that money and remove it from ARPA, then it would drop that two fifty-two, or she could take it from salary expenses for this new year, it's just a journal correction.
But the original amount was eleven thousand three oh seven sixty?
No, the original amount was eleven thousand fifty-five dollars. If you wanted to remove it, uh, use the two fifty-two from ARPA, you would need to make an amendment to make it eleven thousand three hundred and seven.
We were short two fifty.
Correct, because of the fact that it went into the new fiscal year, correct. And with any wage increase for the new fiscal year, that's the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I get.
Yeah.
So wherever you guys want to take it from.
But we did pay the two fifty-two out of the salary account.
Out of F Y twenty-five, we paid it.
I don't, yeah, yeah, I, so I think she wants either to remove it and amend it in ARPA, so.
Well, this would be a wash if we leave that alone in ARPA.
Right.
And we just take two hundred and fifty-two from ARPA and put it into the F Y twenty-five salary account for the highway.
So you want it from salary, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Yep.
Because otherwise they're two hundred and fifty-two short that they weren't planning on spending.
Right.
So you want it to originally come from ARPA?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, and just replenish what we basically borrowed from the salary account to meet that expense.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Got it.
Okay, the VEDAR software. We're making an adjustment to that.
Yes.
Amount.
The original amount of fifty thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents included, um, a third party fee of two thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, which Lori has done the three quotes herself, so we do not need to use, um, S H I. So that saves that amount, so it could be amended to forty-seven thousand four sixty-five.
Okay.
I'll put these all in one motion.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
So once we do the Zoom one.
Yep.
For Zoom, we're going to owe?
So Zoom has, um, a yearly fee of two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents that can be paid from ARPA, if the board chooses to.
Do you have a choice where you'd like to have it taken from?
I like to expend the opera before December.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we do have a cable account, but if you can use the ARPA, that will only last longer for future expenses.
It'd be better to use ARPA for that one.
Dawn, you want to do three motions, or just make one motion? Or all three?
I'd make one, all three.
Okay.
They're all amendments.
All right, so, make a motion to take two hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty cents from ARPA to replenish the highway salary account for F Y twenty-five. And for the Vader software, um, we're going to reduce the fifty thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-five cents that was already voted at a previous meeting. And that new figure will be forty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-five and zero cents. And then our Zoom, um, would you call that?
Our annual fee.
Our Zoom fee will be two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents, also from ARPA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, the reduction from VEDA was twenty-seven hundred and fifty-nine. That kind of paid for the twenty-three hundred.
Yeah, pretty much.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah.
And that's also, like we said, going forward, that's going to be quite a bit per year. Roughly six grand a year savings, over the present system, so.
I'll sit on that.
Sure.
Excuse me. The regional animal control officer agreement and possible vote. As was assigned at our last meeting, I met with the town administrator, manager for the town of Rutland, to see if we could get some more information to kind of fill in some of the vague spots we had. And, um, we had a very good meeting with the town manager, he was very helpful at explaining where some of the ideas had come from, which we did not know. The idea of regionalizing this department emitted from the central mass planning, when a few towns had decided that they were having problems with their animal control. They didn't have enough people evidently to, all these little towns or smaller towns, to run it, so they decided to ask the towns if they would be willing to regionalize, and they used Rutland, because Rutland already had five towns with them. So they asked the towns of Sterling, Lester, Boylston, and Boi- and West Boylston to join them, and would make a very large regionalization project for the animal control. Eventually, Lester and Sterling dropped out. The remaining seven towns did join together with Rutland, and that was the host town, that is the town that makes all the decisions as to how the regionalization plan is going to work. Oakham became unofficially an afterthought. The town manager was surprised to hear that their members would like to have Oakham's old cruiser, and would give us a break in the fee for the first year. Also, he was surprised to hear that Oakham's animal control officer would be hired to fill a part-time vacancy in their regionalization plan. He clarified that Rutland would probably not approve the transfer of our old car to Rutland due to its age, condition, and mileage, which is two hundred fifty thousand miles. He said that it would cost the town of Rutland too much money to probably have to redo that vehicle, make sure that it's up to speed, and that it was also needing to be refitted. He also mentioned that it would not have been appropriate to hire Oakham's animal control officer at this time, and that a part-time officer was hired two weeks ago. That position started out as eighteen hours per week, and is now up to twenty-five hours per week. If another town is added, the position could become full-time with benefits, and a second car could possibly be needed. The price keeps going up, expenses continue to rise higher than what we had originally thought about when we were looking into doing this regionalization project. Since we will soon be entering into a new budget season, and we don't have a firm cost ready to be put into our budget, I feel we could put this decision off for the present. Perhaps another time when the town manager could join in on discussions before rumors, rumors are spread. I am, at this time, not opposed to future discussions that would make it less vague and the discussions with Rutland, but I do not feel that this would be the year to do it. I don't think this is as appropriate as it could be in another year. And that's my position, and that's what I learned from talking to the town manager. Discussion?
I'm still kind of where I was at the last meeting, so.
We can table it.
Table it for now?
Okay.
Make a motion to table it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Driveway permit updates. I'm still working on them. As to how many were permitted, how many have forfeited their permits? There's been quite a few going on, I did go over last time, some of the information. There are ninety-five roads, driveways right now, that need to be done, need to have aprons put on them. Hello?
Mr. Trump is calling.
Is he really?
Telemarketing.
They all want money.
Oh, they all do, that's for sure. I've also gone through the forms that we have for the town and their roads. I have gone every road except Route one forty-eight, because it was taking my life in my hands trying to drive down, stop, and take a picture, mental picture whether the highways had aprons in them or not.
It's supposed to have a detail.
I told Lucy she needs to ride with the chief of police or an escort or something, and not do it on her own.
Well, I did the other towns, the other roads pretty well.
At least those are, you know, a little off the side.
But, um, we, I made through it anyway, so individually, it, it, the numbers are all over the place. Uh, Bullet Road needs one, Edson Road, there were four. Twelve for Old Turnpike Road, Barry Plains Road needs two. Happy Hollow needs one, so it just goes on and on that there are places for every single road except for two. Tomlinson Road was one of them, that was really easy to do, with one house on there. And Gray Oaks Lane, even with all their houses, there was only one that needed to be done, so it came up to be a total of still about ninety-five that have actually paid in money to have the work done, and then never was done, so they forfeited that for now.
Yeah, so like Tomlinson would have never, that predated.
Right.
And that was a dirt road up until.
Exactly, and that was the other thing, was I then had to go through, and I couldn't bet on the dates on all the houses, because I don't have their deeds in front of me. A good number of them, probably another one hundred twenty, were predated. They didn't have to have permits to have their driveways done. So, we don't really have a stand to make them do it.
No.
And I think probably the easiest way to do this, it's very difficult, we may not have enough money in the account at today's prices for putting tar on all these roads. And just for the aprons, uh, we would have to pay somebody to come out just to do aprons on the roads and the houses or driveways that we tell them to do. Or just say, wait until the road is again paved and put in the aprons if necessary. A lot of these houses are turning their, um, dirt driveways into paved ones anyway. So it, it's eventually going to come down, but the cost is going to be higher.
Well, I think that's the only efficient way to do it, is we are paving the road. Find out what the list is and accomplish it, move on to the next one, yeah.
I think it would be cheaper to do it that way, than to bring a tarring company in just to do these.
I don't know how we could do it.
It would be.
Limited amount of money.
Right.
To have them driving all over forty-five miles of road.
Yes. It would be up to forty-seven miles by that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but those should all be paved.
But, I mean, some roads had four, some only had one that needed to be done. East Hill, even though it's a big road, only had one. The Old Turnpike side had more that needed to be done, rather than the East Hill side. Which I found unusual, but I do know that on one forty-eight, there are several that need to be done. But again, I didn't go down that road, stop at every driveway and, and see, I saw a few.
Nineteen eighty is the.
Nineteen eighty-one, they started, I think it was voted in nineteen eighty, and nineteen eighty-one, they started, and most of those were done very nicely as they were requested to do. But then as we got further up into the nineteen nineties, two thousand, they're not all done. Some of the contractors didn't complete by doing them.
Right.
But it was just very interesting to go through them all and see how they were done. But I, I do agree that if we stop now and went and hired a company to come out and to pave what we have to do, that we don't have enough money, I don't think, in the bank to do it.
We got ten of them done.
Right, because in the first few years, we only charged people a hundred fifty dollars. And then later on, it went immediately up to four hundred dollars, because prices kept going up. So, the money that we may have on hand to have it done is not enough. We fi- I figured it was around twenty-nine thousand five hundred.
I think if you figured out the asphalt in place per ton, at today's rate, I forget what the bids were, but four hundred is probably not enough to cover an apron with the dimensions.
No.
No.
So. However, we want to go forward with it, or is that something we're interested in going forward with, or just working on it as we do the roads?
Yeah, we do it, so we're doing it.
I think that's the.
Yeah.
Most efficient way to do it. It takes twenty years, but.
Now, we do one road every year, so that's twenty.
One, that's what I mean.
Actually, we have a few more in there. I almost forgot a couple of, but I did get them all. Okay, so, we'll work on that and see how it goes as we are repaving roads.
Administrative assistant reports. Um, on the website, oversight by strategic, I did reach out to Blythe, who then connected me to, uh, somebody else in her team, and we've been going back and forth coordinating with the date. I think that we are doing a call or a Zoom later this week. They said that they do, they do have the capability, but of course, you know, she wants to meet via Zoom or a phone call to really know what it entails. Yeah, um, and again, regardless of whether the board continues for them to be the oversight or not, there's still a fee on that phone call, so I just want to make it clear that, that, that will happen. Um, in regards to uh, the website, you know, again, it would also be, do we want to just stick to Civic Plus? I know that initially it was voted to go with revised, but they were not the lowest bidder. Then they weren't really on the, um, they were not the lowest bidder, and at one of the reasons, I mean, there were a few reasons that Civic Plus kind of, we went the other way, was because they were rolling out with this upgraded version, but now we're closer to that upgraded version. So, I did talk to Civic, Civic Plus, and they said it's probably sometime from now to March, when they'll automatically roll out with it at zero cost. Granted, we do have the grant. So it's up to the board to. So it's up to the board to.
We're gonna have to go to bid.
Yes, well, the bit, I think we would have to start all over because they are not the lowest bidder. It was more of municipal was the lowest bidder, we eliminated them because they couldn't give what was required, so that's a fair. But with this one, it was, I think it was, they're not the lowest, but we prefer this one, they're state bidding, so we can go with them no matter what, even if they're a little bit more, and now it's, that's not the case.
They're not, they don't hold the state bid.
No.
They're an approved vendor from the state.
Right. So isn't Civic Plus initially? They all use for most cases S H I or another third party where they charge them an initial, you know, C, kind of like what we were going to do with Vadar. So it's up to the board, do you want to proceed and use the grant, or do you want to let, stay with Civic Plus and let it roll out on its own? I just don't, that's the case, then the grant would have to be, I would assume, returned unless we could apply it, if there's other ways that we could utilize it.
Can we repay the years' costs?
I think up to maybe three years.
On the grant.
Because I think you can only have a contract for up to three years, that's why with Vadar, we had to, you know, no more than three years.
So it was a grant to pay the next three years of.
Civic Plus?
Civic Plus.
Yeah. So if that's the case, then there would be no, it would be an automatic rollout for Civic Plus, which.
Unless we want to upgrade.
But no, but this would be the upgrade.
I mean, beyond that.
Unless you want to upgrade, which then would come with an additional, you know, how to sustain the additional cost. Yeah, yeah. So I'll explore those options as well and just see, but I'll still meet and have the call with Strategic Solutions, just to see what they offer or have any other input, you know, they might have.
Word how we're going to do this.
Sure.
So.
Yeah.
Let them do it.
And similar situation with the, uh, the fiber project. Procurement is so much fun. So it's, the grant was awarded for a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and seventy-five, a hundred seventy-two thousand seventy-five dollars. The, which was over, you know, requested over amount just in case anything came up or additional cost. Phoenix does not hold a state contract, so again, another third-party vendor. In this case, it would be First Light, and their quote was sixty-six thousand eight sixty-four sixty. So the question was, is that sufficient because it's a state contract? But it's not because it's still over fifty. You don't need to do the full sealed bids, but you do need to get at least three quotes. So it's almost like they have a state contract, but you have to do the process before, and this is coming from the Attorney General's office because I called them, I mean, not the Inspector General, excuse me, because I wasn't sure. I'm like, do we need to put bid? She's like, in that case, because they hold a state contract, no, but you still then need to get three quotes. I know. I bet.
No, even though it's over fifty.
Yes.
And they want to treat it like it's under fifty.
Because it's labor and materials.
As opposed to the person.
Opposed to a one-time item that's tangible, you know, so that's the difference.
Well, it's the one-time item, it's fiber.
Yeah, but they're doing labor work. Uh, yeah, I don't know, it's so tricky.
I know.
I said to her, whoever called me back, I'm like, your phone must ring all day, she's like, all day, every day. Because there's so many questions, and as the projects become bigger, you know, there's so many steps that you want to make sure that you know the answers for sure, and not get to a point where it's like, oops, no, we can't pay this vendor. So I will try to, I will talk to her, um, Strategic as well about this.
Does the fiber grant include any additional things other than just the fiber and construction?
I don't think so, but I would have to go back and look at the, the details, um.
Like any accessories, like computers?
I, I don't think so, but I can't answer that with a hundred percent certainty, yeah, all I see is the fiber. Just the connection.
Set up the buildings with the the racks, the hardware, the plugins, the wires. That's why I think it's included.
Let me see. Oh, yeah, that might because.
Why we went higher than. Right.
Okay.
I mean.
I'll pull up the grant.
Original cost.
The original, yes.
I'll pull up the awarded contract.
They're gonna have to snake it through one building to get it to the Yeah. police station building.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'll look at.
You know, through the highway fire.
Yes.
To get to the other side.
Yeah, I'll have to pull up the original.
Okay.
Um.
I would think that amount is kind of, it's had to have been included.
Probably. Okay, I'll look that up and then update you guys at the next one. And status on the D O R, actually, I've been emailing them even way before this was on the agenda. In August, they told me that they would have it by the end of August. And then last week I emailed them again saying, hey, we're almost mid-September, so they said that they, they have it, they have a, um, a draft and they're reviewing it, and they should be sending that to us soon.
Good.
And I just want to let the board know that effective this Friday, I will not be working in the office as I will be doing my online classes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just every Friday, I'll be here Monday through Thursday.
For how many weeks?
Till mid-October.
Eight weeks, wasn't it?
Yeah, close, yeah, seven, right.
Can I sit at your desk then?
You certainly can, it's your office, not mine.
The little room down there. Go give me more space, spread out.
And good luck with it.
Oh, thanks. Can't wait.
So that your stars. Your stars and your teacher drawer.
I'll clear it all out.
Is it a gold star or a blue star?
Depends.
For an A.
It's always gold.
Is it?
I don't know. Barbara, what did you do?
I had seniors in high school.
Oh, you didn't give stars.
I had no clue about stars.
Well, that's my update.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any new business?
No.
I don't either. Any old business?
Yes. Maribel and I had a I guess, a telephone chat.
Yes.
Sharon.
Sure.
If I said that correctly, from Town Council. Oh, Schoolhouse Drive and Skyline Drive. And it seems like it's falling into place, they're going to send a letter to the one resident where they think there's a conundrum with the drainage outlet at the bottom of the hill. And basically from the standpoint is we have never had anything correspondence or anything with that residence. So they're gonna send them a letter from Town Council to see if there is a problem, or there isn't a problem. And, um, she's going to prepare, I think we're looking at the eminent domain to take the roads, because that will be a little more straightforward with recording everything from the way she explained it. So.
Yeah, she just wants the easement hopefully from this one resident for the drain.
And I'm still a little confused as to why they don't think it shows up when it's on all the drawings for the whole subdivision. Doesn't make any sense.
That it's the only house that doesn't have it on the date according to.
Yeah, so it's kind of.
That's why they were a little hesitant of how to approach it.
And I don't know whether it's just because they didn't find it, or they're looking in the wrong spot, we didn't get that deep into it. But they're going to send a letter. Hopefully the response is in the positive, and then we can move forward. On the other one with Spectrum and having them complete their project, we spoke with Jared and he's given that over to.
Dave. It was the original attorney from K P Law that helped with this process.
Oh, yeah. With the contracts.
Yeah, and he, Jared responded to me last week finally stated, uh, he apologized for the delay. David's been out of the office for a little bit, but hopefully would be looking into it this upcoming week.
So depending on what he comes back with, hopefully next week, we'll probably have a decision to make as to what kind of correspondence we want to send to Spectrum Charter, charter Spectrum about completing the project or having a day in court, I guess.
After my last email, yeah, she's never responded once.
So.
We showed a little backbone and not, you know, giving into, why, why does the board not just, you know, assign it to another address? Well, that's not your decision. That's, it's, it's in the contract that they want to continue with the original agreement.
So I think we're at the point where it's hypothetically coming up on breach contract. Or maybe even not hypothetically. Yeah, I think it's. Until they go kicking and screaming. That's kind of works out. Email, I would say that they are now.
Yeah, and they haven't gotten any response since my last email once I kind of said it's, it's at the Towns Council.
Yeah, so depending what Dave comes up with. Yeah. Uh, I think the next step is to send them certified letter, registered letter stating, here's a copy of the contract. You are in a very bad position as far as a contractual agreement, and you need, you know, we need to know whether you're going to finish it, or we're going to move forward with our legal action.
The one thing that I questioned was that second half is ARPA allocated, so if it falls, let's just say it's a breach of contract, then if it's after December thirty-first, that those funds then are no longer accessible to the town either, I think it would just be, I don't know that, that gray area.
We have a contract with Spectrum.
Right.
Right. That contract is not for ninety-six thousand, it's for a hundred and eighty-something thousand.
But, right, but we already paid that first half.
That's fine, but the contract's for a hundred and eighty thousand, right, so that money is tied up already. I guess her point is if they walk away, let's say, keep it, which I don't think they're gonna do. I don't think they're gonna do that. But or if the court says, and they say, no, we're not gonna do it, well, okay, you're not gonna get paid, then we've got to scramble, oh, we've got to wrap this up before December thirty-first.
Right.
One way or the other. One way or the other, yeah. So that we can say, hey, you know what, we're gonna go out and. Yeah. You know, it's December thirtieth, and hey, you know what, we should probably buy a dump truck.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, I'd hate for it to then come to place after December thirty-first where the funds no longer would be able, for the town to be able to use if it goes that route.
Yeah. So, so, I mean, we should think about some type of backup plan to tie up that money before December thirty-first if it looks like it's going to go that way. Yeah. I mean, even if it's taking the money, giving it to for legal counsel if it has to go to court. But I think we could probably get them for damages if we win. So, yeah. Well, I don't think they want to get involved in triple damages.
No, I don't think so.
No, it's really, it's pretty straightforward. Then we'll have two dump trucks. Two nice ones. One nice one anyways. They could do one that's like a hundred and sixty-something. Which is a hundred grand over. I think with the ninety-six, nineteen ninety-six one cost, I think, I want to say that was sixty six or sixty-eight thousand or something, and that came with a plow a long time ago.
The good old days.
It runs good though. But that's kind of, that's where those two things stand. And.
And if I don't hear from Jared, I'll send them another email, if that's okay, kind of explaining that financial part of it. Almost like, you know, we need to know because if that money becau, would be available, you know, the town has other areas that they would want to apply it, but here's, we're on, it's time sensitive.
Yeah.
Yes.
And Sharon was supposed to send us a copy of the letter that she was sending.
Which I have not received yet.
Okay, so as of today, we have received, so. Okay. And I suppose if we don't by Wednesday, maybe we'll bring her phone and say, hey, did you, uh? Yep. Because that needs to move forward. Okay. For no other reason, just to be able to plow the roads and everything that goes along with that. Up to ninety. Well, that's the other thing, that's probably I bet it's almost a mile. Multiply that out by twenty years. Lot of cash that's been not being used for roadwork. Exactly. So. That was it, right? As far as
Yeah.
Those two things.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
Nothing else?
Nothing else? Anything else?
No, I'll make a motion to go home.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I just ask a quick question? Borrow shut from the gap in the road, I just, the status on the roof leak, has it been repaired or? Or whatever, I don't know, I'm just curious.
I don't think it's been leaking.
I don't, I mean, I understand that, but.
I called a couple.
Just that one time, I think.
Initially, and it was more of a, oh, you need to call someone that can get in there, we just repaired, not get into it, so. I don't know, do you have any suggestions on a company I can, I may call?
Yeah, it's kind of state contractors, let's see who's up there.
Okay. Okey-dokey. Maybe I'll ask, um, who did the library use? Right?
But the guy broke his ankle, that's why nothing's happened. Oh, Jared delayed his.
They were there yesterday, or Friday.
He was there, yeah, one day last week because the boom had changed.
Well, there were two guys there and they were.
That was what the problem was.
Okay.
So out of the basket.
He didn't break it while he was here.
I don't think he was here, I think he was somewhere else.
Yeah.
Luckily.
Hope not.
Okay. Do you have any correspondence? I do not have any.
I don't have any.
No, not that, not, um, I'm drawing a blank, do you guys have anything? I can't.
Harold called in today and said the roadside mower is fixed. Yeah. But then that, I don't know of anything.
Yeah, I can't, I don't have it.
Oh.
Yeah. I'm like, I feel like there's something, I don't know.
Yes. The, um, I received a call from a gentleman for, you know, inquiring about uh, battery, solar, um, at the Amherst, at the old Amherst, um.
Right.
Lot over here, I did direct him to planning board initially, uh, and I told him that if he wanted any further information from the board, because initially he had inquired about with the board, that, you know, to feel free to call back, and that's what he would do, that he would contact planning board, I provided the email of the chair. Planning board, I provided the email of the chair, and if he didn't get anywhere or. Wanted more information from the board or meet with the board, that he would contact us back. So, should be interested.
Reading through what you had emailed. There's kind of, basically, it's only zone for. Auto salvage. At the moment. At the moment, yeah. And then the, the bylaw.
Yeah.
For solar fields in conjunction thereof. Batteries, so it wouldn't be a standalone. And thinking about it. If they ever do something with batteries like that in conjunction with a solar field. We should probably have something in writing where they have to put those batteries. However, they're configured with a burn.
Yes.
So the fire department can flood that. Yep. That burn. Yep. The subversion, because once they go. Yeah.
Yeah, then.
That's the only way you're gonna. Right. Instead of dumping millions and millions of gallons on it. Yeah. You know, and then it, you know, in that particular location, next thing you know, it's. It's in the Brook, it's into the Bean Pond, it's into the Five Mile, it's into the. Like Flashway, the Quaybar River. Yep. But if they contain it, the burn, that's something to amend the. The zoning to going forward, it has to be able to. Yeah, and you'd also, you'd have to have, you wouldn't want to build a pond every time it rained either, cause that would be kind of. I don't know what the engineering would be, though. Right. You know, whether you had to have a valve to shut it off, you know, like a um, a fuel bunker, you know, with a. The type of thing, but.
And just so the board knows, the same company that is inquiring now, he's inquired months and months ago, different gentleman. Um, and Phil provided whatever information and they kind of went away. So not sure if it's just a new person, you know, don't know those details, but this is their second. Inquiry, different times, different people though.
But they also called up that the governor made her announce. Said we're going full steam ahead with.
Yep.
So the motion to adjourn is on the floor, second.
All in favor?
Right.
All right, seven eighteen. Don't do one, do you mind at an end?